Well, please, Father Roman.
You can do it, guys.
Alder Holmquist?
Here.
Alder Moore, I don't see. Alder Wood?
Here.
Alder Thomas?
Here.
Alder Radmacher?
Here.
Alder DePula?
Here.
Mayor O'Conner? Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Is there motion to approve the minutes of the July 18th meeting?
Uh-huh.
Second.
Any questions or additions?
Yeah. A couple of minor ones. One is, Arneeth's appearances, we, I think, we either want to indicate that the individual came regarding concerning of a sign that she believed to be offensive, or we indicate that she is concerning regarding a sign and leave out the word offensive. Second one, the second one had to do with actually a question, and Police Chief, we might need your verification, that the car video is forward-facing and has the ability to record backseat passenger at the same time, because the way it's written right now, it indicates that it's a forward-facing camera, but is able to record the individual in the backseat. And so either it's an "and" or it's an "or."
Okay, what, do you have the page there? A leaner?
Yeah, page two.
Which one are we talking about?
So, my guess is Police Chief can correct that for us. And then, Arneeth, 62E was, encourage everybody to sign up, and I think we mean everybody being businesses and residents. That was really the...
Anyone else? All in favor of approving the minutes as corrected, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have an appearance from Dane County Exec Joe Preese tonight. Mr. Preese? Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks so much for giving me a few moments to come and talk to you tonight. Benson's before the pandemic, so it's really good to be here once again in person to give another county update. And tonight, I wanted to stop by and talk to you about two things. Briefly, I want to give you an update on kind of where we're at with some of our lakes work, especially our dredging project that would be most interested, certainly, in Manona. And then I want to talk to you about our climate work. We've got a lot of great things going on climate change-wise, and I know that's something that Manona's very interested in and very actively involved with. I really appreciate all of your efforts in that area, too. It's really exciting to see all the good momentum that we have going forward. So, I'm just, as far as lakes tonight, I'm just going to talk about two of the things we have going on, because a lot of you are familiar from past updates with the work that we're doing with farmers and with municipalities, you know, like Stormwater Detention Pond Grant Program, et cetera. So I thought I would give folks updates on a couple of the things that you see going on around the counties you might drive by regarding dredging. And there are two types of dredging right now that the county's doing. One is the Suck the Muck program that you're familiar with. I think I briefed you initially on that a few years back, last time I was here. We continue to move forward with that. Just for a quick refresher, Suck the Muck is a program that we initiated, we didn't name. One of the local papers did, but we stuck with the name because it sounded good, which is a way of getting at phosphorus directly, phosphorus that's in the water. We have all of our efforts to prevent and reduce runoff going into our lakes, but what we learned is that there are lots of rivers and streams that run into the lake that have over centuries' worth of sediment buildup in them, that is just this mucky sediment, mostly from agricultural runoff, some of it, again, over 100 years old, from when farming first began here, before a lot of the modern conservation practices were put in place, that's just laden with phosphorus. So regardless of what we do upstream, which we still need to do to reduce the amount going in, we have all of this phosphorus in the water that is continually feeding into the watershed. And as probably more people in Manona know than anywhere else, one pound of phosphorus equals 500 pounds of algae. Algae loves phosphorus. And so what we've done is we've mapped out those areas, and we've gone in and we've begun hydraulically dredging, and taking, you know, tens and hundreds of thousands of pounds of that sediment out, and tens of thousands of pounds of phosphorus out with it. And what we do is we map out each location, and so far, we've been fortunate, there's been county property nearby where we're removing the muck. And we remove that sediment, we get down to the nice sand and gravel bottom, we do habitat restoration, fish spawning areas, it's just great for the biodiversity factor. But also, we remove that muck and that phosphorus. And for example, last year, we were in a location where nearby, there was some property the county owned that was an old mine that we were going to reclaim, and we piped that muck to that area, dried it out, used it as fill, and then covered it with topsoil, seeded it over with prairie plantings, and then that seals that phosphorus in there so that when it rains, it's not free to run off and go right back into the watershed. So we continue, we're on our third leg of that to date, and that, a program that will go indefinitely, certainly, over the next few years. And even when we finish up kind of our, you know, main initial round of it, we will continue to go back and do cleanup, and we're looking for areas as we go where more of the sediment comes in and trying to create traps so we don't have to go do an entire length of stream every time we can find it and be proactive and catch it. And that also gives us a little indication of where we might have more work to do upstream also. So Suck the Muck is going great. The other piece that we're doing is the dredging between the lakes that you've seen some of go on. I don't have to tell anyone in Manona what happens when we get a lot of rain, what happened in 2018 during the floods. Once we got past the initial flash flooding, the water kept on draining into the lakes, but our four lakes are connected by channels that over the decades have filled up with sediment. Now, it's a different type of sediment. It's construction site runoff mostly, it's sand and gravel. And so what happened in 2018 and what happens during other times is that more water comes in than we're able to move out the other side. We can have the locks and the dams open, we can't move it through. That certainly happened in 2018. So that event really clued us into the fact that we had to do something about those clogged channels. And I will say, this isn't something that, you know, the county's required to do, it's not a local mandate, but it's something that no one else is doing, and we felt like we were uniquely positioned to step up and do it. We've invested tens of millions of dollars, and we will continue to do so. We even purchased our own dredger and hired our own staff this year because contracting for dredging is very challenging to do. There aren't a lot of folks to do it, controlling the timing is hard, and we want to be able to control our destiny and be able to move forward as quickly as possible. So, right now, you may have seen, well, you may know, between Manona and Wabisa, we dredge, between Wabisa and Mud Lake, and right now, we're up by, in McFarland, across the street from Babcock Park, Babcock Park, across the street from there, doing some dredging. And we have a quick video we'll show in a minute just to show you, but to demonstrate kind of the philosophy of how we do that, it's similar to the Suck the Muck. We have to do permitting through the DNR to make sure we're not going to be stirring up anything that's going to, you know, further pollute the water. We have to have a disposal plan for the fill. And one of the neat things we're doing there is, we're doing it in two parts. We're doing hydraulic dredging, and we built it to, again, to some county-owned land that we have that's right next to a nice wetland that we want to restore this area, that's solid ground. And so we pipe that over to this area where we have a pit dug, we dry it out, and we will eventually use it for the fill that we need, but we don't need that much fill. So, but because this is just such a pure, you know, construction site runoff, the sand, as I mentioned, we're working with construction companies who are coming and taking that sand, and they're reusing it, and they're using it to lay underneath parking lots and roadways that they're building. So it's a really nice kind of closed loop, it's reusing it, it's giving them the material they need, it's less mining of that material, and it disposes of it for us in a really nice environmentally friendly manner. And then, at that location, again, we'll do as we did with the Suck the Muck location, we'll fill it to where we need it, we'll smooth it out, top it off, and turn it into a nice, a nice field there, a nice prairie that will look right down into the wetland. So it'll be, you know, a nice pollinator habitat, it'll absorb the water, help reduce pollution. Scott, do we have that video, or?
It's just like, literally like a one-minute video, it just gives you a little look at kind of what we're doing over there. Sometimes it works. We'll see if we can get it tonight.
Let's see it.
Let's see it. Let's see it. Let's see it. Let's see it.
We have some interesting situations.
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 Jerry, did you see Jackson's aware of the green herd ice cream?
It doesn't look like it's on video.
One more.
Who's asked, "Brother, that's special?"
The deeper and wider we make it, the more water will give flow through it. Taking three foot out plus 50 foot wide, that makes a lot of extra water that can just flush out. We're slowly moving down the Ahar River. We are dredging down to about five, six feet. You're looking at these gauges that say you're already down six feet. You have a cutter head that is just grinding up silt, chewing it up, and sucking it through the pipe. Sand and particulates will settle down, the water will come up, and we have a de-watering structure where the water comes out and leaves all the stuff in our sediment park.
Yeah, so that, on there, that's where the sand comes, the trucks come out from there, and then that'll be, you know, in a year or two, that'll just be, you know, spreading over there, you know, dredging work. So, we, we're there now, we're also down by Lake Kaganza, because obviously, we don't want to start upstream and unleash that tidal wave on Manona and everyone down. We want to be able to get everything out the bottom first. Probably, we're probably a good three to four years from completion, you know, during each segment and moving up. So, you know, this was something we have to do, probably would have had to do eventually, but because of the changing climate that we're experiencing, these intense rain events that, so-called hundred-year rain events that happen every few years, we just have to be more aggressive about this. But we're excited because it's actually a solution. It's something that I think will make a big difference, certainly for Manona and a lot of your neighbors, once it's all complete. So it's nice to finally have an understanding of what the exact issue is and what we need to do to address it. So I think I'll, unless there are any questions, I'm going to kind of segue into the climate work, because it's obviously related to this. Are there any questions before? Or would you like me to wait till the end, Mayor?
Wait till the end.
Okay, okay, great, thanks. And let me know if I start chewing into it any time you want, I'll try to get through this as quick as possible.
You're good.
So, yeah, so, climate change is here. It's funny, it seems like just a few years ago, the big debate was, you know, is climate change real? That discussion's kind of out the door. Now the discussion is all of a sudden, oh my gosh, what are we going to do about it, right? Because it's here, the impacts have arrived a lot faster even than anyone thought they would. And as many of you know, a number of years ago, we partnered in the county with the university to have them help us predict what kind of conditions we were going to have to deal with here locally, because we all see what's going on out west with the fires, we see hurricanes, we see a lot of the global impact, but, you know, as units of local government, we need to know what do we need to be prepared for here. And the forecast came back, as we all know now, that we were going to have a lot more 90-plus degree days, we're going to have warmer and wetter weather, especially in the winter and especially in the spring. Now, when you're looking at lakes, that's the worst time to have warmer and wetter weather with those downpours, because that's when most of the phosphorus, in the best of times, gets washed into our chain of lakes, because so many of the fields aren't planted yet, the soils bear. We get those spring rains, the ground's frozen, and there's a lot of runoff. So one of our challenges with our lakes cleanup work has been these changing weather patterns, because we've made a lot of gains in reducing phosphorus runoff, but a lot of those gains get counteracted by our changing climate. So we did a couple of things. We've done all of our lake work, we also went through an exercise with all of our county departments, asking them in their five-year planning documents to start looking at the impacts that climate change will have on their operations. For example, our highway department is now changing the way it designs some of our highway projects in certain areas that are more low-line. They're using bigger culverts to move water faster. Public health is getting ready for, you know, certain insect-borne, for example, diseases that we didn't used to have, but now we're susceptible to. Human services, dealing with folks, you know, in the summertime, vulnerable folks needing more help if they don't have air conditioning, and on and on and on. So we went through every department to look at that, and it's amazing how many folks have had to do some planning. Obviously, emergency management, especially after 2018, had to do a lot of, you know, emergency response planning, preparing for these changes that we're going to see. So, once we got that in place, we started looking at, okay, we can't change the world in Dane County, but we can do our part, and we can be an example when it comes to working to prevent climate change, or at least not add to it, be as efficient as possible. So, we looked at it both from an environmental aspect and an economic aspect, and the good news is that we've reached a place in our history where doing the right thing by the environment is also doing the right thing fiscally. The cost of renewables, sun and wind, has come down so much that it's cheaper than coal-fired power right now. Energy efficiency has a two- or three-year return on investment usually, and then it's all gravy. And when I'm talking to local governments, no one understands more than local governments how rare and precious operating dollars are. So when we can make these investments that reduce our energy bills, those are monies that help us fit under our levy limits and help us fund the programming that we need and want to be able to offer. You know, I just, we might as well be burning those tax dollars and throwing them out the window if we're not taking advantage of the opportunities that efficiency provides. So countywide, we, you know, we have many dozen, you know, many different facilities, as you know, many buildings of different sizes throughout the county. So we did an assessment, we've continued to do our energy efficiency. This year, we're doing, we've basically checked everything off the list, and now we're doing another assessment to see if we can push the needle a little further with energy efficiency, because the technology changes so quickly. In the meantime, once we started going on energy efficiency, we started looking at renewables, and we now have 17 different solar installations on county properties. The biggest of which you may have seen is out at the airport, where we partnered, that's a, which is a great example of fiscal and environmental responsibility. We wanted to offset more of our electric use, we needed place, we needed beyond the buildings that we have, because not all of them can fit solar. We were looking for areas where we might be able to partner with someone. And because we happen to have an airport, there's a lot of land around an airport. So we did an assessment to find about, it's like eight or nine acres, not eight or nine acres, it's an eight megawatt's worth of solar panels that could fit on some land we had out there. And we approached MG&E, and we said, if you build this, we will purchase all of the energy that it produces. So you have a guaranteed customer, we'll lease you the land at market rate, you build it, sell it to us, and we'd love to pay less than we're paying now for our energy. They did the math, and because solar is so cheap now, without a penny out of our pocket from Dane County, they developed that. It offsets 40% of our electrical use, and we save over $100,000 annually on our electric bill from that one project alone. So the question doesn't, is, you know, it kind of switches from, well, should we do this, can we afford to, to why aren't we all doing this if we have the opportunity? Because it just makes sense in every way. So, between all of our other renewable projects and this, we still had a gap in our goal to be 100% offset renewable electricity. So we entered into another partnership with Alliant Energy, out across the street from our landfill, across Buckeye from our landfill, had some land repurchased, and we're developing, it's currently under construction, a solar field there that will be twice as big as the field at the airport. And when that flip gets switched, probably around the first of the year, we will have reached 100% offset for all of our electrical use in Dane County government operations. And we'll be the first county in the state and one of only a few in the nation to have 100% offset, and that'll be, you know, in 2023. So we're really excited and really proud of that, not only because of both the savings in dollars and the carbon offset, or the electrical offset that we're able to do with renewables, but now we can be an example and show other folks what we've done and how to do it, like what we did with the airport, et cetera. Because a lot of folks, you know, want to do this kind of work, but they're not sure where to start, they're not sure how to finance it, they're not sure if the financing even makes sense. So if we can lead by example, that's when we really start getting that multiplier effect. Now, our next goal is to be carbon neutral by 2030, and that's a much bigger step, because it, you know, electricity is just one piece of it. There's our natural gas use, there's our transportation use, et cetera. But we have a plan to get there. And that plan is not only our renewables and efficiency, but it has to do with transportation fuel and the fact that we are fortunate enough to own a landfill. And we're fortunate that that landfill has a natural gas pipeline, literally running through it, an interstate natural gas pipeline. So a lot of you probably know, a few years ago, we invested about $28 million to build a first-of-its-kind facility to, and I don't know if we have, do we have our slides, Scott?
No.
Oh, we don't have our slides, okay. So to build its first, a first-of-its-kind facility for a local government that takes the, that takes the methane out of the landfill, we have pipes all over it, it takes it out, it cleans it and compresses it and turns it into transportation fuel, renewable transportation fuel made from the banana peel you threw away last month, basically. And that is the cleanest transportation fuel available, unless you're driving probably an electric vehicle charged by the sun. And so we utilize that in two ways. First of all, over the last decade, we've been converting vehicles, especially our bigger vehicles, our trucks, those big orange highway trucks that you see, to run on compressed natural gas. So we fuel those with renewable natural gas from our landfill. It costs us about a buck and a half a gallon to produce that. And so when you're looking at a big truck that gets five, you know, five miles a gallon and burns diesel, plowing snow, you know, and diesel's five bucks a gallon, and we're getting that for a buck and a half, huge savings, obviously, and that's going to be a buck and a half forever, no matter what the price of fuel rises to. So we'll continue to convert our vehicles. We're also converting to EVs where applicable, et cetera, but especially for all of our large trucks, renewable natural gas. So, but we can't even use all of the gas we produce, so what we do is we sell it into that natural gas pipeline, and it's purchased by Speedway. You may have noticed some Speedway stations sell compressed natural gas, some of what they're selling now is our renewable compressed natural gas. So the economics work in a couple of ways. There's the buck and a half a gallon that, you know, the money that we save, but then we get to sell the excess to Speedway, but where we really make the money is on the renewable energy credit market, especially California renewable energy credits, people who buy carbon offsets. And we literally will pay for that $28 million facility within a few years, and after that, we will be making several million dollars annually in profit. So again, if you're a county somewhere, municipality that has a landfill and you have access to a natural gas pipeline, the question becomes, why aren't you doing this? The private sector is seeing this now, and they're jumping into it, they're getting into it. But again, that's another benefit of being in a place like Dane County where the public wants us to try these things, and they're okay with us taking a risk. There is no guarantee that this facility is going to work, and I may not be standing in front of you today, because this was before my last election, if it hadn't worked, because that was $28 million, but it did. And so it's that much less scary now for others to come and look at doing this, and we have a lot of people who come and look at our facility. So there's the offset that way. Then the final way that we're working on getting to 100% carbon offset is sequestration. So one of the things we're fortunate in Dane County is, even though, you know, land is at a premium, there is land here, and we've always done land purchases for, you know, water protection, for our lakes, for recreation, et cetera. And now we have a special eye also on where can we find land and rehabilitate it and do restoration. One of the examples was a parcel we purchased a few years back in, it's Pleasant Springs, but, or, excuse me, it's Middleton. It's the, not the town of, anyways, it's right on the outskirts of Middleton where the Pheasant Branch Nature Preserve is. And right there, right next to the preserve, there's a farm that's been there for many years, you know, over a century, and it was up for sale. And it was being platted to be a residential district. And we looked at that, 160 acres, and we had a couple of concerns. First of all, this was soon after the flooding of 2018, and when we did the calculations of what kind of runoff would be going right into Pheasant Branch Creek and into Lake Mendota, you know, once all of those roofs were there, that hard surface in a subdivision, we were very concerned. And then we looked at the lakes, the water quality aspect of it, too, and felt that, you know, this was just, it was on one of the places where you can, it looks magical, you can actually see the spring bubbling up from the ground, Pheasant Branch Spring, and then it feeds into the Pheasant Branch Creek and into Lake Mendota. And so it's a really fragile, you know, ecosystem that had been farmed for all of these years. So we purchased it, and we're in the process of restoring, doing a, we did a wetland restoration, we're doing a prairie restoration on those 160 acres. So it's going to have a huge impact on flood mitigation, on keeping that water where it hits, it's going to have a huge impact on keeping those nutrients that were right there when the farm was there, and if it was a residential area, out of the lake, and it's going to be great for pollinator habitat, recreation, and carbon sequestration. An acre of prairie sequesters approximately the same amount of carbon as a forested acre, which I think is a fascinating fact, but it's because of the root system and because it draws the carbon into the soil. And so we have a plan now to reach carbon neutrality by 2030, so we're really excited about this. So we believe in walking the walk before you try and tell other people what to do. And so, so we're well on our way, but always striving to do even more. And so one of the things, as you folks know, that we did along the way, we created an Office of Energy and Climate Change. Kathy Kuntz, who a lot of you have worked with, is the director there, she's great. And one of her jobs is to work with local units of government and business and people throughout the community to coordinate our efforts and help share information and give technical assistance. And Manona is a very active participant in our Sustainability Leaders Collaborative, which has just been a great source for information sharing. I remember our very first meeting, and people raising their hands, saying, well, we were looking at a project, and we wanted to do renewables, but we couldn't afford it. And what we did is connected them to other municipalities or school districts who did renewables and could help tell them how to afford it, through grants, through certain financing. We work with local businesses to make sure they know about the PACE program, through which a business can get special financing to do energy efficiency and renewables with no cash out of pocket and a positive cash flow, because the loan is structured in a way that the payment on the loan is less than your energy savings from the project that you're doing. So our goal moving forward is to continue to try to, you know, share everything we're doing, work on continuing this momentum with all our partners like Manona and others who are, you know, all ready and willing and able and doing all these great things together. And it's a really exciting time in local government. I mean, it's pretty exciting on the federal level right now, because it looks like there might finally be, knock on wood, cross my fingers and whatever else I can do, some movement on climate change. But, you know, this movement was started when there was no movement going on on the federal level and very little on the state level, because we can't wait for them, because someone else isn't doing something is no reason that we can't. You know, it's the art of the possible, because there's so much potential. And then, one of my favorite pieces of all this is pulling younger people into it, too. You know, our work with Manona's schools, there are groups of young people in high school who are, you know, very active in the climate change movement, and we want to stand by them, and we want to help them in any way we can. We want to help them lead, because they are leading and they're incredibly inspirational. And I think all of us in this room would agree that we owe it to them to help them create a livable world for themselves, because this is their planet for the next 60, 70, 80 years, and we want to do everything we can to help them, you know, create a planet that's livable and is still around and isn't, you know, frankly, on fire every summer. And I think we can get there, and that's why this work is so exciting, because we have tangible results. And that's kind of the latest update on where we are. Again, thank you for all the work that you're doing in Manona, there's so many different things going on. And any way we can partner and be of assistance, we're always more than happy to.
Well, thank you. It's really exciting hearing the update, and we appreciate your taking the time.
Thank you, yeah.
Does anybody have any questions? All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, I really appreciate the time.
And I hope next time we see you, you don't have to be wearing that gown.
You, too, thanks.
Okay, there is no public hearing, there is no consent agenda, moving on to council action items under unfinished business item 1A, consideration of Resolution 22-7-2581, approval of revisions to the approval of revisions to the Manona Police Portable Audio/Video Recorder Policy put forth by the Public Safety Committee. Is there a motion to approve this?
Sorry?
Chief.
Hello, Counsel. Good evening.
So this, again, is my request to you to adapt, or adapt, adopt a new policy for the police department, as explained in the last meeting. And I'm here for any questions to Alder. A home point, I call the tail end of that, and I believe you're right in the direction that we have two cameras in our squad car, one for foreseating, one for the person being transported.
Any questions, anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Aye.
Item 1D, consideration of resolution 22-7-2582, approval of revisions to the Manona Police Body, More and Camera Policy also put forth by the Public Safety Committee. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Chief.
Again, counsel asking for the adaptation of this new policy is brought to us by Lexipol, a company who we've invested a significant amount of money in, but I think that it's been well vetted, in my opinion, by Public Safety Committee. And I was available for all of you for any questions. And to this day, I'm available, should you have any. But I ask for your adaptation.
Anyone? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Moving on to new business, item 2A, convening closed session under Wisconsin Statute, Section 19.85, brand one, brand G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved. This deals with a couple of different items, Broadway Hotel Partners LLC versus City of Manona, Kinsler et al. versus City of Manona, and Walmart Real Estate Business Trust versus City of Manona. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
I need to go into closed session.
Second.
The court, please call the roll.
Alder Moore.
Aye.
Alder Wood.
Aye.
Alder Thomas.
Aye.
Alder Ronmacher.
Aye.
Alder DePaula.
Aye.
Alder Home Price.
Aye.
We have a closed session.
Everybody, this is Lori.
We are back in open session. Moving on to the next item on our new business. Item C, consideration of resolution 22-8-2584, adopting the Dane County Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan 2022 update. And, by your chief, will be addressing this. Jerry?
Good evening, everybody. I'll address it the best I can. This is a hazard mitigation update that came off of Dane County. It's a required update. It occurs every five years. It's on theme of direction. The informants, the administrators started it off, so I got the emails when they came in. No significant changes to our previous annex to this. Everything you have to approve it, it goes back to Dane County for approval, and it goes to FEMA for their approval report. I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have about it. There were no significant changes from the last one. We took the last one and just updated what we need to, so.
Questions?
Does this need one read or two reads?
It could be either one or two, as long as it's approved.
Doug?
I would just say there's a lot of very useful or interesting data in there about the city, an incredible amount.
Yeah, it really is. I was just looking at page, page four of that particular document, page 26 in the packet, but residents self-identified as disabled. I just.
I assume that came from census, is that?
Yeah, 1,400 out of 8, 8,400 people altogether. I just, I don't know. It's eye-opening.
So this could be done in one read?
Yeah.
It gets not scattered.
I know, it's not.
Is there some, does this bind us to some sort of action? I wasn't really sure. What, what do we do with all this information?
It's not for us to do, it's for Dane County for the community.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Their job is to identify hazards within the community that they may have to respond to.
Okay, got it.
But we do need to eventually approve this, correct?
Yes, it does need to be approved, the resolution.
Would you like to approve it tonight?
Your agenda has the notice that any item may be taken up for final action. The council's past practices always been the only, so we're at risk.
I think I'll be here for the next council meeting as well. It has to be done by August 30th, so we do have time.
I guess we do have other things for the agenda next time, so. I mean, we quite often take things out of order when it doesn't say it on the agenda.
Sure. So are we just here to make sure the information is accurate? It's like, I mean, about Manona?
This is more informational for the council.
Yeah.
It has to take a form of resolution to approve, which is like presented to the council.
Yeah. So if we want to wait till next time, that's fine, too.
I can.
Kathy, Brian?
I would just add for Truist and others, the adoption of this is for the county, but we also use this to then help us at a city level to look at our own emergency, performance, emergency response.
Yeah, I would imagine, yeah.
Our coordinated efforts, how is our incentive command structure dovetailed with Dane Counties? I mean, there is reasons this information is valuable for us as a city municipality, but.
Right.
This is really for us just to look at it.
I found it incredibly valuable, yeah. Exactly. That's kind of where my imagination was going to, like.
We have a whole emergency management plan, but it's.
So given the fact that this is non-controversial, to our benefit to do it sooner rather than later, I would move to suspend the rules and take this item out of order. Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 No approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item D, presentation discussion 2023 and 2024 budgets. It's also going to follow discussion of the levy limit and the public safety building. Oppose public safety buildings.
So I just had a little bit of slide show here. So basically, I kind of want to give the council updates, where we're at with the 2023 budget, and we're going to have the 2024 budget, and why that is, and then kind of talk about some capital projects that we're looking at here. So when you're, especially when you're working with your committees, kind of know where this is coming from. So, I don't know, everybody knows here, there's a, the state imposes levy limits on your property taxes. You can increase your property taxes by this number, by this net new construction. Debt services excluded, though. So we just got our most recent net new destruction, net new destruction number, which is 1.94. It was expected around 2, so this is where we thought. This is all based on the construction that happens last, in 2021, that's done by basically 1231, or it's done by 1-1, 2022. So all the construction that happened out Phase 3, the last phase of the riverfront project, this is basically all of that, that's term in their net new construction number. So we just received our number today. We're expecting around 2, came in 1.94. So let us step back before I get into the next number. The city of Manona, because this landlocked struggles with this, this net new construction. I'm just going to give you what other ones got today, too. Cottage Grove is at 5.77 was their net new construction. The Forest is 5.7, 5.07. McFarlow is 2.39. You know, Fishburg's at 4.16. Sun Prairie's 3.32. Of all the cities, we had the lowest, 1.94. So we also, you know, we don't have fields that we can just go in and put property on there and use that. So that is one of our biggest struggles here as a community when it comes to net new construction, how it relates to the property taxes. So what that is, is they have to take the, as you're seeing the screen, last year, when the levy was 5, 5,352,000, so we're allowed to increase that by 1.94%, which is a level, basically 103,000, 104,000, we're allowed to increase our levy by. So with that, what we've been doing is projections. And just based on just, I do it a 2% wage increase, what would that be? I assume basically our average last two or three years for health insurance is about 5%. Wisconsin retirement went up especially for the, especially for like the police and fire number, and 0% for non-personal services right now. What would that look like? Plus this over by 125,000 over your levy limit, 103,000. So that's really basically, you know, 208,000, or 228,000, we would have to increase our levy just for that situation. So we're basically 125,000 over this year's levy limit. One of the reason for that is there's your health insurance increased by 109,000. Usually it should be about 50,000 to 60,000 is what the annual increase should be of health insurance. There's a reason that this, we have this program called OPTA. So OPTA is if you don't take family or single insurance, you get 125, $250 a month. So it's probably $3,000 a year, just based on some changes, you know, family situations. Kids, I guess, come from 25 to 26, adults go from 25, 26, come off the parents' insurance. Now they have to go from the OPTA to single insurance. It's basically a slip, and that's basically, most of them with their families. It's basically sort of $20,000 per person. So basically, you have four people with that. So it's, you know, 70, 80,000, just right around there. There's some other changes. In total, it's $109,000 increase, just, just for that. So that puts, that already puts over a levy limit.
Mark, can you tell me, tell us, you know how many people in the city don't take the health insurance?
Yeah. We can, next year, we'll be down to probably four.
Okay.
Four, five.
Are we paying, people, giving them an option? If they take single or don't take insurance, do we give them a bonus?
You just give them, basically, it's 125 per picture, it's 250 bucks a month. You put some to, return to, basically, 401K type account, so it goes into there.
That's the OPTA.
Yeah. So that's $3,000 a year, is what that ends up being. So now, you know, family situation changes, policy maybe changes jobs, or somebody comes 36 years old.
I suspect some of it is, if they have a partner, the other insurance may have gone up with the other insurance costs going up, anywhere the rest go.
Yeah. So yeah, and then look at the ones that are remaining. The remaining ones, there's a couple of ones that are under 25, which kind of gets to 26, that's been like three or four years. And the other ones, I don't believe that we switch this. I don't think we're, this is just, unfortunately, just a long time.
Okay, it's not, you can, I'm, I'm.
I know, it's just one of those perfect storm situations.
I would be thinking.
You know, usually haven't had that situation. And then I kind of broke down wage increases. This is what it looked like at 2%, you know, public safety, library, public works, public fund 204, which is the community center, rec, pool and senior center, and general government. These are only wages related to property taxes. Does that include utilities? So if there's a levy associated with, that's part of these numbers. So then I, what I ended up doing is, third count of 53,000, say, public safety, that's 2% and sold out. So 2% is 87,000 right there. FICA, WERS is what the public safety one. I think there's an increase overall, like one from 18 to basically 20% for Wisconsin retirement. So they increased what we're paying for that. So that's what that large increase for WERS is. So we're almost about 132,000, just for those. So that's kind of what we're working with right now, you know. We're going to be looking at different ways to solve that problem. And I'll talk about that a little bit, just kind of like get the heads up.
Mark, before you leave the retirement rate, so the rate now, that if you combine the employee share and the city share, is, is 20%?
Or police and fire, they have.
Oh, police and fire, okay. All right, thanks.
I forget the name, what they actually call it, protective services.
Yeah, yeah.
So let's look, I'm just going to carry on to 2024, because this is all kind of related. 2024 is based on this current year, new construction. There's only one project that's going on in this Chapote, and that's a tear down, rebuild. From just talking with the building inspectors and planners, it's not going to mount so much for that new construction. So basically, zero major projects in 2022. We had a bunch of them that might have happened, have not happened. We got the Moron Gardens, BMO Hares, Village Lanes, Layhorse Properties, they did not happen this year. The project has to be done by year end, so it's not going to be done by 1-1, 2023. So let me assume that's going to be zero. We have a couple house projects, I, the building inspector said there might be some larger ones, but not a ton. So I'm estimating the net, net new construction for 2023, it should be, sorry, 2024, should be, the 24 budget should be .0021. So that's equivalent to about $7,000 increase.
So the third way is 2024?
Yeah.
Okay.
For 2024, yeah.
Okay, got it, yeah.
So we're expecting that 7,000 for 2024. So it's really, even if it's a little higher than maybe, you know, the number comes in a little bit more. The big issue when it comes to that new construction, too, is our equalized value is so big, like we're at 1.6 billion dollars. So just to get 2%, yet the project comes in at 33%, $33 million. So you need a lot of big projects to come, just to have an effect on that new construction. So it's hard. I've been pushing Doug, and people are telling me their department meetings that you're the guy for the city, because you need to get these projects in, because this affects your operating budget. So $7,000, you know, these are estimates, but as you can see, it's not a big number. And you saw what the, just health insurance would be, just 2%, if you even did 2% next year, what that effect would be, well over the $7,000. So help me fix that. Here's some options we've kind of talked about, or are thinking about. Now, right now, currently, we have two health insurance plans. You have an HSA, each an old plan, they call it. Basically, you pay your premiums, and you pay an office visit. And that's a, we also have a high deduction plan, basically a health savings account plan. So basically, what that is, it's a, for fam, for families, $3,000, you pay up deductible, and single is 1,500. If we forced everybody to go to, an HSA plan, it'd save the city about 97,000 total, including utilities, too. So that's one option you can look at. Reducing library hours, you know, limited brush pickup, you know, cut services, staffing, or lower wages, through limited transit in there. We're working on transit right now, I think through with the metro. Metro's cheaper, by the 30, 3,000 to the property tax number, with the new numbers I've gotten from Metro. Reduce overtime. Reduce capital borrowing. So capital borrowings have a little bit issue, you know, sometimes you got these, reduce capital borrowings as far as like a project's done in the parks, streets, wherever. What ends up happening, they end up adding operating costs. That's kind of, we're seeing. So those get added in there, eventually build up enough, and we run into issues where we don't have enough staff on hand or something to that effect. So especially right now, everybody's looking at their budget, their capital budgets, it's hopefully kind of looking at that, too, is like, we'll just add operating costs or not. One thing, another thing is the wheel tax. So wheel tax does not require a referendum. The tax only used for transportation costs only. Examples, they could use it for the transit system, or capital transit costs, or operating transportation costs, reduced by that. So we talked to DOT, we have 6,816 vehicles that would meet the requirement for a wheels tax. meet the requirement for the wheels tax. The DOT would run the program, and then they get seventeen cents per registration. So if you did a ten dollar wheel tax, then that's sixty-seven thousand dollars per year. Dane County has it twenty-eight, Madison has forty, um, there's all other councils in Dane County that have it, but there's a list on their website that has a lot of communities that do, um, just an example, you know, Apton has twenty, Bearable has twenty, Lloyd's twenty, uh, there's a lot of communities outside Dane County. Fort, Fort Exacis is twenty, Genesee's forty, Lodi's twenty, Madison's thirty, so there's a list on their website that lists everyone, um, a lot of communities are starting to go that route. So it was one of the, looking at, so, you know, most of them are at, twenty's probably the, the average of all of them. Um, so if you did that, you know, you did twenty dollars, that's, you know, almost a hundred and thirty thousand, that's an option. I looked at special trash, special charge trash in the tax bill, there's another option, you could remove the, uh, trash from your property taxes, garbage from your property taxes, and you would special charge it on your property taxes, you see your total tax bill, then you have another line added for special charge, and then you have your, your net tax.
And that's not deductible, right?
It's not deductible. So I worked with this one with the state too, based, so what they do is they take our two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-two budget number, and our two thousand fourteen budget number for garbage, and I think, believe it's like three hundred, say, three hundred thousand, uh, is what we pay currently in property taxes, in two thousand fourteen is about two hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that difference, that three hundred thousand to two hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is basically twenty-four thousand, twenty-five thousand, you can use that for additional levy limit, it's really a small dollar amount, take that out. Recycling you cannot remove from the trash, or from the tax bill. The other one is a levy referendum, it's too late for here for two thousand twenty-three, um, but for two thousand twenty-four, um, levy referendum question, levy referendum question must be approved into the clerk ninety days before the two thousand twenty-three April election, or two thousand twenty-four. So basically, the question would be, uh, you want to increase our taxes for ongoing services by two hundred thousand each year. Or you can, whatever you want to write it, it's something we have to come up with, every, you can write that up. Um, I got a list from the DOR, there's a lot of communities that are doing it, um, currently Maple Leaf does it, Tana Madison does it, Cambridge has it in Dane County, but there's a lot in Walworth County, uh, up north, so it is, Beaverton I know has it. So communities are doing these, you know, is it, you know, something you want to look at, is that something you want to look at, and you know, try to figure out what a normal increase would be every year, time, your health insurance, what your salaries would be, kind of figure out what your non-personal costs would be, and kind of estimate that in having an ongoing one. One, one issue you run into is, you might lose your expenditure restraint pro, uh, money for one year. Penalties restraint, states, Algeone, can spend so much per year, it's basically what your net new construction number is, plus inflation. So this year's inflation is really high, but some years it's really low, and you could run into problems where you lose that, and that's about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, would be at risk. They qualify for the next year, but you might lose a point.
Isn't, wasn't last year the first year we had actually gotten that?
Yeah.
For a long time.
So there's some things we're kind of looking at, um, you know, just levy referendum, an ongoing one, or you maybe, uh, you know, wheel tax or some of the things, or you, I mean, otherwise reality, we're probably going to be cutting services, um, a lot of services throughout the city. Which is, unfortunately for a community like, uh, Manona being way locked, it's a period of all the people, uh, just, you know, non-personal costs, inflation's going to hit us, and all these other services, repair maintenance accounts, contracted services, professional services.
Fuel.
Fuel, so, that is a huge issue right now. And then the last one is the city campus building, or public safety building, I don't know if everybody's aware of this right now, we're in a process of doing a feasibility study, for a new public safety building. During the public safety, during the feasibility study, we found that our best location, is the, uh, current location, but they're entitled to redo the city hall, police and fire building, redoing that. We will get a final report, um, here August tenth, and, uh, to myself and other chiefs, and the mayor on August tenth, we'll eventually get this reported to the council, um, hopefully this September sixth meeting. But the preliminary estimate is between, you know, forty-six to forty-nine dollars for that project.
That's in twenty twenty-four numbers, construction numbers.
Yeah.
Assuming they don't keep going up, they've already gone up twenty percent this year.
Yeah. So you look at, we try, if we do go ahead with this, try to get a USGA loan, um, which is forty years, otherwise it'd mostly last forty-five years, or general obligation loan, so you can see, you can kind of estimate, like, if you got forty-six million dollars of forty years, it's over one point some million dollars onto your levy, before interest, just in principle. So with that, you know, one of the things we want to look at is, if that's something the council wants to pursue, um, do you think that, you know, this is a sweeter referendum for this? Again, this would have to be, if you're going to do it, same situation with the, uh, property tax levy limit increase, we'd have to, you know, April meeting is when that would be, um, put that on there, or if it's, maybe more time to think about it later on, but that would be, April meeting is when we think about doing that, and save time.
April election, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
April election.
Alder Thomas?
I, it seems to me, um, of the options you presented, the wheel tax is, is the least harmful. We don't bill it. I get my motor vehicle registration, and I can't figure out where all of the costs go to. Ten dollars is like, two, 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 a lot of days at Starbucks, which I don't, I mean, I never spent five dollars for coffee, so, so it seems to me, and, and once it happens, it just, you don't have to keep going and doing it and doing the referendum, so.
But that doesn't even give us enough to cover our shortage.
For two thousand.
You know, I get, I get what you're saying, but.
But, but it, but it's a easy way of.
It's a good start.
With all, people feeling penalized because they're giving up their trash, which is twenty-four thousand doll, I mean.
Yeah, it's not real sad.
It's nothing, it's.
And trash is something that you expect your city to do. I know, I know there's places where you pay separately, but that seems like a pretty basic. Doug?
Um, yeah, to me, I think it's inevitable that we're going to need to go to a referendum, I thought that for a while, and I think now the day is, is upon us. I would just, on the things that you talked about, cost cutting, I, I don't think we should even talk about that health insurance change, that would just be so incredibly drastic to change, to force everybody to change over to a high deductible plan, but that's just too disruptive on people's lives.
We can't give them these raises.
So, yeah, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so the health insurance, we have actually, people have taken, uh, so basically it's three thousand out of pocket, but the city rent currently is reimbursed at seventy-five percent of that, so the, uh, the employee's share is seventy-five, safer for families, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Change for premiums is about five hundred dollars, so that you really would, um, your two hundred and fifty dollars would be what the difference is. Do you know if that makes sense? So it's three hundred, here's, here's, so three thousand dollars is what they're, they're going to deduct or bring to deduct off.
Right.
So the city currently right now gives them two thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, seventy-five percent, so the difference is seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Right.
Change for premiums, you'd save is roughly five hundred dollars out of pocket, out of the employee's pocket, the change, um, the premium change would be about five hundred dollars, and the remaining is two hundred and fifty dollars, and that would be, um, the difference. That'd really be the, technically the increase.
So the coverage, coverage is the same?
Yeah.
That the deductible is higher?
Coverage, everything, everything's the same as, as far as you go on for a, uh, treatment, you still do the same. Just pay your two thousand upfront, we give you two hundred and twenty, two thousand two hundred and fifty upfront, and you're going to come up with that, seven hundred.
Yeah, okay.
Seven hundred dollars upfront, yeah, but you'd save that five hundred dollars in premium change.
Teresa?
So without the city campus building, we're short, right?
Right. Yeah, that's a whole separate thing.
That's a totally, exactly.
Maybe you got serious.
Yep. And what was the amount that we're short?
Uh, we're just starting, so we're, you know, we're still in the, really.
We're just not, didn't have that.
A hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Okay, a hundred and twenty-five thousand, okay.
You know, we're looking at, like, uh, we're looking at increasing fees for building inspection fees and things like that, our fees are weak and trying, and just, um, we're really working it, trying to see what we can save. The problem with the, also, there's really only two departments that, uh, can really make income, um, other than utilities. So you have Jake's funds, Jake is able to basically maintain his own budget, where he doesn't really have much of an increase, because his money's coming in for his after-school programs and other programs. Or the public works, or the police department really can't increase any revenues, and you can write more tickets, but then, a lot of that money goes to the county and the state, so you're not really picking up a lot for an actual ticket or two, it's written. Um, the other one would be the EMS, which they're just making, they have to cover their, you know, their expenses, and then it goes up too, so, you know, they're kind of, Jake's are kind of breaking that even too, so, there's not a lot of other areas that kind of can raise their revenues, you know, like EMS can, and Jake can. You know, library, they don't really have any revenue coming in other than, uh, rent and this remounts and other stuff.
And that's not very much.
Right. So that's a tougher challenge we're working with, and we'll, you know, we'll work with what we can for this year, if you don't want it to, yeah, so, yeah, it was just some of the suggestions we're kind of.
Doug?
If we wanted to do a wheel tax, what's the process and how long, I mean, could we implement it, just two readings to council and?
Yeah, yeah. And there's a list, if you go into, uh, I have a current, if you go into search DOT, wheel tax, and they have all the information.
Okay.
What's in there, who all has it, things like that, vehicles, um, what vehicles that are, because heavy vehicles don't, don't need that wheel tax, and so, certainly mostly all the vehicles like trucks and things like that.
But a twenty dollar wheel tax would cover that shortfall.
Right.
For this year, yeah. Kathy?
So I'm not sure how many of you have been through a, um, referendum to increase the levy, but I have, the first year I got on there, so I got, got involved, and my recollection is that the city can't, you have to find a committee who will promote it, we can't.
Right, we can't, we can provide information, but we can't.
We cannot lobby to do it, and it's a very, um.
Yeah.
Challenging, I mean, when we did it before, it was because the police department had to requisition their bullets, I told the chief this, and the tires had to be bald before they could get new tires, and they couldn't get air conditioning, and that's why, and we run our levy limits then, and it passed, but it's, but it is, it is really tricky, and I think that, um, part of the fact that it ran on election night was, was, um, partially responsible for the fact that it passed, but, but it, it can be done, and we've done it in this community, um, but you have to make a really good.
Yeah, and we have to, I mean, explain the difference between a capital budget and an operating budget, a lot of people don't understand that.
Right.
How can you build that pack tax, or that park shelter, but not have enough money?
Right.
To give a raise to whoever, you know, and they're two completely separate budgets, but people, a lot of people don't understand that, you know, so we really, it's really an educational process involved, I think.
Yeah, how many voters do we have to have to sign on to that borough referendum? What's the percentage?
To sign on, city council approves it.
Approves it, but.
Fifty-one percent, I suppose, yeah.
Yeah, just one, one vote.
Yeah. Yeah, really, less than fifty-one, I hope.
Fifty-plus, whatever.
Yeah, so a lot of.
Can I ask a question about the, um, can I ask a question about the public safety numbers? Um, um, I was under the understanding of the feasibility report that's being done, uh, or that we commissioned was specifically for a new public safety building, and since that time, I've heard numerous people refer to it as, as, if the project's having expanded, and that now they're, they're talking about the civic campus as opposed to just a public safety building, can you tell us?
Yeah. What's happened is that we were, the original thought was that we would be taking down a public works garage, we would be building a building in that area, in the parking lot behind city hall, attached in some fashion.
Public safety.
Attached in some form to city hall, a new public safety building. The problem is, that was not, nobody really looked, we hadn't looked into it that carefully, that's why we did the feasibility study, as part of the feasibility study, in order to make the site work, because we have a, for one thing, we have a well on the, on-site that we have to work around, um, and water reservoir. We always knew that eventually we would be remodeling the, where the police department is now, for more space for administration and meeting rooms and things, it makes more sense, as it turned out from this feasibility study, to move the fire department into the, correct, into the existing administration building, and some shared spaces between police and fire, and move the administrative area into part of the new, new building.
Right.
And this, we'll be explaining all that in this presentation. It's not that we decided to go hog wild and build a big administrative area, it's just that the way, when they got to looking at the space available and, and the piece of property that they're dealing with, that's what made more sense. We always knew we would have to do at least some remodeling of the administrative area, so.
Yeah, it wasn't us that came up.
Yeah, it was the architects who, the company who's been doing the feasibility study for us.
So, yeah, we'll have that, numbers, I'll break it down by, you know, each fire, police, and admin side, um, and then like Mary said, the big, one of the big issues is the well, um, that's the reservoir that are attached, from the ones attached to police station, you know, there's a little building here and drive in there, um.
And that's not something that could be relocated?
They, they look, they did announce, there's, so there's having two options when they, when we look at it, one is moving the, one is moving the wellhouse to, which would be Waterman Park, um, but it was more expensive, so.
You mean, make, uh, making a new well?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, Waterman's Park.
Millions, right, a couple million dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, there aren't any easy answers. And we still have a pool and a community center that desperately needs replacing too. It's unfortunate that most of the public buildings in Manona were built around the same time, and same thing with a lot of the roads, and they're all.
On the trees.
Needing work at the same time, you know?
Right, right.
Brian?
I know I haven't been paying as close of attention to this after some different site, kind of, um, some early site analysis. Um, two, two pieces of the question, one has to do with the previous report that we had from Arrow Arch, um, Arrow Architects.
No, are you talking, we.
Bray?
Bray did a study that was finished in two thousand and eleven, then we hired them for, which you were on that committee that I established, to update it.
Yes.
In two thousand and eighteen, or whatever.
And do you remember the numbers for roughly the same building from the Bray update?
Well, so the Bray, that, this is two different types of studies, so Bray was trying to find a location, and they just, they didn't want to make sure that, they took the square footage and they could pop it on a piece of land and it worked. The difference for them, I don't remember the estimate, they gave an estimate, the difference is, this group we're doing right now, they went through and talked to the two chiefs, and, and they basically detailed how much it would cost per room, and they figured out what the, they wanted some more detail.
They had a whole engineering study about putting it on a piece of property.
Yeah, you know.
It's much more detailed.
Where the detective rooms would be, and where locker rooms would be, so they, they actually even figured out what the construction cost would be. Bray did. Bray did do that, they just sort of figured out here is a piece of land, could fit it on there and here's just a generic estimate.
Well, I think the initial Bray study had a little bit more of the analysis of square footage.
Eleven years ago, yeah.
Of the original one?
Yeah, the original, I don't.
The update may not have, um, and do we know the?
I think we were all, Brian, to your point, I think they actually, at some point, we did have like a twenty-five million dollar figure, I think. But we were estimating, I don't know if that came from the job.
A lot of this is dealing with just the construction costs. It's not like, it might have been, we know a building that was built, uh.
Monterey.
Was built, fire station was built two thousand nineteen or eighteen and basically their prices have doubled or tripled since then.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
It's hard with the, you know, with the supply and demand issue.
Yeah, that's if you include all the materials.
Right.
The other piece has to do with, um, do we know the, the size of the current site? And then, for example, the size of the, um, Blue Park?
I don't, and we can have that information when we actually present that, I don't know offhand. But we, the, the report has the details of all the square footage and stuff like that. So you want to compare it to the Blue Park and to?
For example of, and I know I'm not necessarily suggesting we go back to the drawing board of site analysis.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that's a unique site in the sense of it's very close in proximity. Visually, it appears to be roughly the same size, but I could be way off.
Yeah.
And not sure how much of the construction cost is being able to.
I'm sure.
Start with the trash versus having to.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's.
Lot of additional work.
And we have taught, and in fact, I asked him that just recently, would it be cheaper to build new? Or do what we're doing, and he said, no, this is cheaper. This is a moment.
So, yeah, the analysis they'll give us, it has a breakdown and probably give, I mean, I was just, I just asked for them on Friday, like, give me the final preliminary estimates. I hadn't seen the actual break, I mean, I seen their breakout, just the some numbers, but not this detailed to get to the forty-six, forty-nine. I don't know exactly what's the sustainability portion is yet. There's also the stormwater portion, which there's issues with the stormwater because going drain into the park, you know, and, and people know there's a landfill there, so that's an issue too, so.
Well, of course, keep in mind, building in the park is building on a landfill, so, and anytime.
So hopefully we'll have those details, I'm just kind of, just hope, just kind of give an overview of, okay, this is coming, we're reviewing this. I assume it's going to go to the public safety first.
Yeah, we set dates for that, didn't we, we set the beginning of?
Yeah.
Or the last meeting in August.
So, I think we're going to talk about.
I mean, I think, I'm sorry, the public safety meeting in August, I think this one we had.
Yeah.
So they'd, they'd have that to review it and then come to council.
On the twenty-fourth.
Yeah, that'll be.
This one we were going to have them come there.
So.
Yeah, I mean, I'm sorry, it'll have.
So this is just a heads up.
Yeah, just kind of a heads up and overall picture.
Yeah. So anything else? Out of food for thought?
Got any good news?
We have a landfill, we can sell nothing.
Yeah, maybe we could sell nothing, Mark, out of the landfill. Yeah, so obviously, things are tough, yeah.
You picked a really good time to be there.
I know. And we, I mean, up until San Dona, you know, we've really been holding the line on capital budget projects.
Correct.
I mean, how much we, debt we have has gone down.
Yeah, the overall number is way down.
Overall, it's way down, um, but, yeah.
You keep telling about that, well, somebody has to.
Yeah, it's not nearly as high as has been set elsewhere, so. Anyway, any other questions? And obviously, this is just the first time we'll be talking about this, um, so.
Not the last?
No, definitely not the last. Thank you, Mark. I guess that's moving on to reports. Any updates on DEI efforts? DEI B efforts? Okay, any updates on sustainability efforts?
I just want to, I'm gonna stay on this particular line item, I just would like to remind everybody that this is not just for the city council. The intent of putting this on our agenda was not just to have the city council report out, but also to get the staff in a regular mode of reporting out what they're doing in their reports and through the city council in sustainability. That was the whole reason it was brought up. And I know that, like, I just, literally in the last three weeks, we've, uh, we've learned of two things that the departments are doing that are very significant around sustainability. One relates to public works and one relates to parks and rec, and that's, that should be coming forward to us. Those are all really good accomplishments that the city is, that city is doing.
Are you talking about the asphalt recycling? For public work?
The asphalt recycling, yeah, and, 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 um, the fact that Jake has, uh, can invite that, uh, for transit so he's not running his trucks as often, um, to service our parks. And so I just, it's, it's just a perfect example, and I'm sure there are many more that's the problem. So if we could get, uh, Mark and you, especially to talk to the staff and remind them that we really, we, we want to hear about the, the efforts. Because that, it's not insignificant what departments are doing.
I think it would be a good idea if the staff included that in their monthly reports, so they start doing more regular monthly reports against.
I would love that. I mean, I just know from public safety, I often hear of some just wonderful work that's being done.
Well, and a lot of it is discussed, comes up during budget discussions, you know, and you can only talk about the same things so many times too, I think, but. Anyone else? Okay, we will move on to reports of committees and commissions, Alder DePula?
I have nothing.
Alder, on this?
No report, thank you.
Alder Moore?
I just want to report that there will be no franchise meeting this coming Monday at eight, the meeting is canceled.
Alder Wood?
Just to report that the MPO is meeting this Wednesday at six-thirty and then at seven, we'll be meeting, doing a joint meeting that we do annually with the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, that's on Zoom.
Alder Thomas?
No report.
Alder Rodamacher?
Little, uh, I'll just say no report. I mean, we're doing things, we're just, you know.
Okay, Chief?
August, August ninth.
National Night Out. I think that everyone see the chief's email, encouraging himself to promote that and the school, donations for school supplies. Chief?
I'm going to be just a brief, National Night Out, that's Tuesday, come out, play, it'll be a nice night, um, I think it's all got.
What time does that start?
Four o'clock.
City Clerk?
The partisan primary is August ninth, and in-person voting goes through August fifth, and by you.
Mark?
No report.
Bill?
No report.
No report. Lots of cases and no report, um, I will not be at the next meeting, Alder Thomas will be serving as acting mayor, so. Yes, you have all the power.
Yay.
There's no appointments, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are in agreement with you.